Okay.
Oh, I was gonna do it on the side. I was trying to call you to.
I just felt that.
Where are your ears burning?
It's here in the microphone.
Hi. Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, ready to go whenever you guys are.
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to open this meeting of the Bisbee Arts Commission on Monday, August twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two at five thirty-one P M. First thing we're gonna do is roll call.
Okay. Amy Brett.
Here.
Jenny Druckman.
Here.
Bill Higgins.
Here.
Holly Priestley.
Here.
Angela Rockefeller.
Here.
Uh, Karen Schumacher.
Present.
Sharon Stetter.
Here.
Okay.
All right, no call to the public this evening. Um, I'm going to open by welcoming Holly. It's, I don't know. It is a, um, we are in the middle of planning a festival. So it's gonna be a little overwhelming. Um, what I would recommend is that after this meeting, one of us, myself or somebody else, will catch you up a little bit. We can't talk about things that aren't on the agenda, which I'm doing kind of right now. Um, but I'm gonna try and give a short explanation of all these. We have a huge agenda this evening, so we're gonna try to bang it through. If you don't feel comfortable voting, you can refuse yourself because you don't know what we're talking about. Um, but you're welcome to ask questions too, just make sure that you're talking to the microphone, because they are recording us. So some of these things we're gonna really bang through pretty fast, because there's quite a few. First thing, approval of the minutes of the August first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the August first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
Do I have a second?
I second yes.
All eyes.
Aye.
Any days. This is approved. Um, item two, discussion regarding the final report from gender X circle.
Cirque L'Esque.
Cirque L'Esque, Cirque L'Esque for the grant funding awarded them for Bisbee Pride Gender X Cirque L'Esque of In-Betweens. That should be here, the final report. Um, I know that when the council was voting this through, they did ask that we do not vote things after the fact again, even though it's our money. Um, but they were concerned about voting after the fact for too many things. We've, we paid for part of the performance after it happened because they needed money. Um, which we were happy to do. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, and Angela knows them, so in the future, just we'll get to them beforehand.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I think I dropped the ball in letting them know how long it would take, so.
It's overwhelming. When things take a while to get on the agenda, it takes a while to get voted on.
Yeah.
Um, item three then, unless anybody has any?
No.
And please, I know I'm a little bit like speed insolence right now, but keep going because the agenda is really large. Discussion and possible approval of the proposed chandelier sculpture for the Arts Festival Exhibition from Sam Poe Gallery and to pay Sam Poe Gallery in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars, including delivery and installation. In your packet, you'll see a sketch, which is very beautiful. The only thing that I am a little bit, I thought about this for a while. It was a little bit more than we had originally talked about about.
Money or?
Money. And also, it puts us in a kind of funny situation in the sense that we are paying not the artists, but the key thing is the show except for Poe, who's doing the chandelier. So I don't know how people feel about that, but I was like, I don't mind, I mean, what do you think?
I think initially, we were considering this as like part of our decoration budget. And then, then we also had them propose, had rats, not pose specifically, but the rats organization proposed to do, you know, the entryway. So, um, you know, seeing the, seeing what I saw today as the, um, but what we have to budget for our printing makes me nervous about the extra money for other things like this.
Can we table it? Do you guys?
I'd like to, because I'm.
Yeah, because I wanna do it, but I wanna know where we're at.
I'll talk about money here in a minute too.
Yeah, and it seems kind of expensive for, for what it is, two hundred dollars for balloons and tubing. I just have a tough time with that. And five hundred dollar labor, because it's just a temporary balloon sculpture, but I don't know. I mean.
It would be beautiful.
It's probably huge.
It's four feet across at the bottom. I just, it just seems so high, but what do I know?
It feels like a lot compared to what we're paying musicians and other performers if we put it into that pay bracket. Do you see what I'm saying?
That's how I feel. I think we should table it.
Let's table it. I did, well, on the other hand, I also know that what he's proposing here.
I think it's huge.
Hours wise, it's a lot more than a performance of forty-five minutes on stage.
It's true.
So.
Yeah.
I, I totally understand the worth of it.
Me too. Let's table it.
Okay, I move to table the chandelier sculpture for their Arts Festival Exhibition from Sam Poe Gallery and to pay Sam. Uh, well, we're not paying and, uh, I, I.
Just table it.
That's enough.
Do I have a second?
Chandelier sculpture for theirs.
I second.
All right, Jenny seconds, all eyes.
Aye.
Any days? Table. That's what, I mean, it just, you need to look at money here in a minute.
Um, when you guys table an item, it does have to come up on the next agenda.
It will. I wanna talk about it. We did, we, we talked to him about it.
Okay, just making sure.
This is another one, question. Yes, if we table something because we're concerned about this, can we go back, can someone go back to him and discuss this price?
Yeah, 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 for sure. We can try and, and figure that out before the meeting. This is another one. Uh, Jenny's gonna talk about this a little bit. Item four, discussion regarding paying Chico McMurtry in the amount of thousands for an art project that he will do during the Arts Festival. Just for clarity, it's, it is an art project, it's a huge art project. Chico McMurtry makes the sculptures that go across the border. Um, and Chico McMurtry is a very well-known artist, and we really wanted to include him. Jenny had been talking to him for the last few months. The thing that we had kind of talked about with Jenny and I was that he wanted to dangle part of it over the pit. This is part of it. And we were like, we didn't know what the Freeport approval process on dangling things over the pit would be, considering that it takes, it's taken months to get approval for a part of what? I feel like Freeport would be like, I'm done.
Oh, I know.
Yes, we've asked so much of them to.
Have they replied?
We tried to get him to move it somewhere else, but he didn't, he really just wanted to dangle it over the pit. Or the, the, you know, where there's a border. Um, the other thing was that financially, I know everybody's worried right now. We are gonna talk about that in a second. But at least Jenny and I had come to the conclusion that maybe this wasn't the right thing for this year. Because it was so complicated.
I also was really concerned because he wanted to take maybe eight to ten parking spaces that would be used by people coming to the Arts Festival, which seems kind of counterintuitive. And we wanted nothing to be going on around it. So he could make a film of it, and I, I just feel like that's giving up, that's sort of defeating the purpose of attracting people.
No, I think we're all superheroes, but we're limited on how much we can handle at one weekend. I feel like after Saturday, Sunday is kind of quieter, which might actually be better for all of us. So, I mean, I, it's discussion only, we're not voting on it. If anybody, if they're, if you feel like this is what you want, I want you to fight for it for sure. But we just kind of felt like it was just too much for everyone.
I think it would be fantastic to have.
Me too.
But I also feel as though we need to focus on some other things as far as directing our finances, for finances.
I agree.
I agree with that too. There is a lot going on.
There's a lot going on.
And that would take a lot of extra energy from somebody, and I don't know who.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have. I mean, we each right now have a kind of an area that we're focusing on in, within the festival. So unless, you know, we start cloning ourselves. There, I'm not sure how we're gonna be able to.
Accomplish it.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, since it's a discussion only, is it something that we would put on the next agenda and vote yes or no? Because.
Well, it could also just sort of fade into the background. Unless you wanna vote on it.
I don't wanna vote on it. I just wondered if I could let you know that our decision, because it doesn't look like we've made a decision. I'm just wondering how it processes.
Um, I think, and Ashley, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're still in the discussion process. We did come up with a number of what we, he said he would need to make it worthwhile. But since we never put it on the agenda as a voting thing, we don't have to address it as a voting issue.
Correct.
Right?
But we can, but we can actually give Jenny direction as far as how to kind of.
Yeah.
All right then.
I'll take care of that process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny, for taking care of that.
I, it's also my understanding that I can reorder this chaos.
Absolutely.
All right, so I'm gonna reorder this a little bit, because I actually, item five is a.
Oh, yeah.
It's a doozy.
I'm gonna go through the votes first to get that over with, okay? Um, I'm gonna go to first, highlight a discussion of possible approval to pay the city of Douglas for transportation that will be provided to the Bisbee Arts Commission for their festival, the arts event, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventeen cents.
And that's for our shuttle, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that's like.
I'll make a motion.
You wanna move to her?
Yeah, I gotta take a big breath.
All right.
I move to approve paying the city of Douglas for transportation that will be provided to Bisbee Arts Commission for their festival, the arts event, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventeen cents.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All eyes.
Aye.
Any days? Easy now. That was a good price, I thought.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be more, cheaper than balloons.
Let's see what other, I'm going in money terms, okay? Cheaper than white balloons. Somebody say that. Next, if somebody gets confused, I'm just going through the voting stuff right now. Discussion and possible approval to pay Eva Rupert up to one thousand to be the press agent for the Bisbee Festival of the Arts.
Wait, where'd you jump?
Up to. I'm skipping, I'm, I'm voting on money.
Wait, where?
I'm right here, I'm right here.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to get the ones that are actually.
Yeah, yeah, the voting ones.
Uh, we have talked about hiring Eva to get the press releases to all the different newspapers and magazines in Arizona and to Arizona.
Radio stations.
Radio stations.
So I have a quick question, is it basically she has like, uh, hourly fee, and then this will be the cap or something like that?
It's more like she's gonna do a thousand dollars worth of work quick.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, we talked about what we could afford.
Uh-huh.
And that seemed like that's what we could afford. And it was gonna be more than that originally, but she also was in brain man for like three weeks, so really she didn't do anything. Um, she did for free already rewrite my press release, which I really appreciate.
Yeah.
Because apparently he was doing that, um.
Are you feeling that's like, that's a good amount of money still?
Yeah.
Yeah, she, she was a, I talked to her, she was happy with it.
If she's comfortable with it, and I think she'll probably get done things way better than any of us.
It's just, I, yeah, I just think honestly, it was almost a gift to myself in the sense that I was like, how am I gonna have time to do that?
You don't have time for anything.
Um, do you have a motion?
Uh, I move that we approve the pay of Eva Rupert one thousand dollars for being our press agent for Bisbee Festival of the Arts.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All eyes.
Aye.
Any days? Thank you. Um, this one's a big one, and this, I have a few questions about this one. Discussion and possible approval to pay Bridget Shanahan up to thirty-five hundred dollars for the graphic design of the exhibition catalog. We will talk about this a little bit more in length. We have received a donation of five thousand dollars from Sloan and Danielle to pay for this catalog.
Okay.
Um, that money is for Bridget and for printing. This is the question I have, and it's actually for Ashley. Okay, and stick with me for a second. We have a budget of thirty thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand of it is our own money, fifteen thousand of it was COVID funded. Suddenly, we have an additional five thousand. So does that mean that our budget is now thirty-five thousand? Is there any issue within the budget doing it that way? Okay.
That was a donation that was specifically given to you for something, so I think you're fine.
Okay, because I was worried, I was just worried, there's a budget process for the city, and so if we suddenly try to make our budget bigger, it would be an issue, but if it's, because it's.
It's a specific donation, you're fine.
I just wanted to make sure that didn't bite us later. Um, that money is for that. And it is a, we're hoping it won't go up to thirty-five hundred. I think that we scared her a little with the amount of artists. So we might find that it is less than that. But that was a, that donation was specifically for her.
And that will come out of the five thousand.
Yeah, and then about a thousand, that's gonna, whatever we're paying our photographer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's a, there's, there's some money, it's not covering everything.
What about the printing? We just, we just were looking at quotes today. Did you see those? Bridget sent a quote to me.
No.
I didn't think of that, okay, sorry.
No, no.
I'll discuss it when we get there.
Yeah. But if that makes sense to you guys, it's, that's what it's for. Um, do I have any issues with that? Any questions?
Are we gonna have enough to cover the printing?
Yeah, that's what I'm a little concerned about, is that printing costs.
We should, I mean, I will.
We've been holding back, because we originally had in our budget reserved money for a catalog.
Okay.
And then we got money for a catalog.
So now a catalog is much nicer than what we were gonna be able to do ourselves. So by the time we add what we had budgeted for the catalog originally, plus the five thousand donation, we should be able to still stay within our catalog budget?
Yeah, this'll, this'll make me feel better, and I'll go ahead and tell you this. I did the numbers today. This includes the donation of five thousand dollars. It also includes the six seventy-five that we received from registration for vendors. And then the whiskey liquors aren't playing, so that was three hundred dollars that we didn't spend. So I redid the budget. Right now, we have spent eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
We have seventeen thousand left.
Yeah, which sounds better than I thought it is.
Yeah, that's better than I thought.
That's better than.
Yeah, I, when I read it, I was like, oh, wow. That's, that's everything. That's everything that we have spent so far.
Still nervous about the printing costs.
Wait till we get there.
Oh, you're gonna get there?
Are we gonna get there? Is there one other question?
We, you know, it's probably we get there. Um. So that means, you know, that means we have eleven thousand dollars left. Because I took the five thousand out of that. Does that make sense?
Now, did twelve, yeah, got twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five, yeah.
After this.
After, after this.
Seventeen thousand, eight hundred.
Includes the five thousand.
I mean, eleven thousand, eight hundred. That includes five, that's all. And then five thousand was taken off of it. Does that make sense? We can take the five thousand out of it completely, but I mean, it, it's, it, yeah, just take it. Right now, we have eleven thousand dollars, let's just say it the other way. Eleven thousand dollars for the art festival, including, for putting. Do you have a motion?
I, let me see here. I move to approve paying Bridget Shanahan up to thirty-five hundred for the graphic design of the exhibition catalog.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Jenny seconds, all eyes.
Aye.
Any days? All right, we're spending money like millions.
I know.
I will say that this money is, it's gonna be a lot of money though. I'd put it back if you voted against it, but I just wanted you guys to have it clear. So as of this evening, we will have about eleven thousand dollars.
After all this.
All this?
Yes.
Okay.
Thirty-five hundred for Bridget Shanahan is already taken off.
Yep, got it.
Discussion and possible approval to pay Deb Mahoney a twenty, two hundred and fifty dollar stipend for the use of her studio to photograph and store the artwork for the exhibition.
Also, are you?
Um.
I move to approve.
Yeah, because really, that's the deal.
Pay Deb Mahoney. Two hundred and fifty dollars stipend for the use of her studio to photograph and store the artwork.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All eyes.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
That was a little greater.
Discussion and possible approval to pay Vista Print up to two hundred for table tents. I need a table tents now. We will have a big printing cost outside of that, not talking about the catalog. But we have, the graphic designer has designed a giant thing to go on the building, the downtown building. And we have the mats, which I sent you a copy of, which I need because that's just the, it's not right yet. Yeah, um, but this is just table tents. I don't know how many table, I, that wasn't a hundred.
And is the idea to put them all over town in the little.
High desert, Roca, Green.
Maybe some hotels too.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they'll put them on all of the tables, so it's nice and, and stuff like that.
Is this a hundred of them, I believe? Table tents are cheap, who would not? Do you guys want more?
I can, that's, yeah. I can make a motion if you're ready.
All right, you go for it.
Well, do we, wait a second, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of times on these printing things, you can get stuff for like each, each stage, and you get so many more, and each individual is so much less.
That's what Vista Print, I get more, I get more for a, if I buy a hundred, I'm gonna get it cheaper, but it's still two hundred bucks.
Yeah, so, um, is a hundred enough? That's what I'm wanting to ask.
Do you think so?
You think so, okay.
We can always throw in another thing on the, if we feel like, if we get them, it takes about two weeks to get them. If we get them and we still have a month out, and we're like, oh, we need more table tents, we can just order more.
Okay.
I mean, the nice thing about Vista Print, um, is it's just really reliable.
Do you think people steal table tents, like they steal posters?
Cool.
No, I don't think so. The, the, the.
And the silverware, and the napkin, everything.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve paying Vista Print up to two hundred dollars for table tents advertising the Bisbee Festival of the Arts.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All eyes.
Aye.
Thank you. Then, we are going to talk about.
Cater.
Cater.
I have some comments about that.
Yeah, please, I took it over to you.
Okay, the, the two that got back to me, and, and there's two more I'm waiting on, so I'm hoping to be able to table this. But Dave, or sorry, Rod Cass, Cafe Roca, said he is going to get me a, 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 or a bid, or whatever you call it. And also, the Heather Redden from, she just opened Copper Pig, you know, board, she said, oh, we're interested in doing that too, we wanna get you a quote, and so I've been saying, come on, because we gotta do it. The other two.
We can table it for the first evening.
Yes, the other one though, I got a question. This is with Anna, who said five thousand dollars, but she's kind of going a little more than I think we need.
I think five thousand seems real.
For math or dirty?
She also said she's gonna have, I know, because I was like, I'll go to Costco and do it for two thousand.
Do I have a motion to hire Amy Brett to cater Anna?
And Dave does have a little kitchen in there.
Hey, does he?
We didn't know, we were trying to figure out if there was a place to.
There's a little kitchen off to the.
Well, a little bit bonus, yeah. So, um, she had put on here like more, twelve pieces per guest. This page that I gave you, it's not, I.
Oh, is it?
Oh, it, it didn't print or something. So she thought twelve pieces per guest, and then.
She's, I never.
I was talking to somebody who goes to these kind of things all the time in San Francisco, and he said, that's too many. Like, you don't even need like maybe four or five at a month.
Considering that, I know that, um, I'm bringing her a name of herself. Um, Peyton has done this so many times. She, she actually catered my wedding.
But Peyton had better.
And that, a thousand dollars for two hundred people seems reasonable.
And Spanicopita for another four hundred. I'd like to see what the other people offer, and that, otherwise, it looks like I would personally lean toward Peyton's, um.
Yeah, they also, I mean, that, yeah.
I'm leaning that way too, I.
I respect that she's always, we know she will deliver. It's not like with Roca, it just takes them a little bit longer to get that.
Now, recall, everybody, that we are going to have a, this, that VIP is also a fundraising event.
Yes.
Yeah, that money, that money really is gonna probably come from what we have in ticket sales. So that, you know, we're, we're hoping to sell one hundred tickets at fifty bucks a piece, that's five thousand more dollars. Um, not that I wanna give it all to Anna.
No, I don't think.
I don't, that's because we have to give everyone the catalog.
We also have a bar, so.
And I also, like, uh. I don't, I don't know how to, like, sometimes, you know, this is a small town, you don't want to tap stuff, but I'm, just FYI, I won't vote to pass. Amos.
Okay.
Stop.
Fair enough.
So we can maybe table that and, and, and see if I get those other two in.
I trust you, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to table?
I guess it could be you, Holly.
Holly, you wanna jump in?
I sure do.
I move to.
I move to table the possible approval to choose a caterer for the fundraiser event and to pay them for the fundraiser event.
Yeah. Perfect, good job.
I'll second it.
All eyes.
Aye.
Any days? Table, all right.
Good job.
Thank you for, I know it's hard for you, it'll hold a people too, anyway.
I, well, um.
Well, now that we spent all our money, and let's get back to the beginning of the agenda.
I was on page two.
Yeah, we're back to page two. And we'll, we'll go through this, there's some things that we have to talk about. Discussion, deadlines for Art Festival. I just wanna say, got my liquor license signed.
Yay.
And now sleep well at night. Took a long time. Um, thank you for Park Luntus for signing those. They will receive twenty-five percent of alcohol sales.
Okay.
And so we have a schedule up on the website, check it out if you haven't seen it.
Oh, uh.
Good. I don't, any pictures from you?
Pictures from me for the.
Circus E.
Okay, I actually have some for you.
Yeah, I actually have some from Brad's, and Eva sent me some, but.
Just a couple, okay?
Yeah, just for the website, something that's like high DPI, just something that looks, so I can.
Okay, hopefully, if I send them to you and they're not, we may only be able to represent one or two of the performers with high DPI.
Whatever you have, I just would love to put a few, so people can get a sense on the end of the schedule of what's going on.
Okay.
Um, other deadlines, what else do we have going on? Oh, yeah, Sharon.
Oh, yeah. So. Seven hours a day lately.
I would say everybody should, Sharon has worked exceptionally.
No, well, we, I have had some help from you guys, but, um, no, we're getting close. I think we're probably, um, weren't we at like eighty artists reviewed our last, uh, count? And we have at least forty-five more submissions. We're gonna be, our catalog may not be as many as a hundred and fifty pages, because we may not have a hundred and fifty artists. So we're getting, but, and I'm happy with that, I, you know, I'm at this point right now where um, I, I have artists who are still trying to submit, and I said the deadline is on the nineteenth. So it's, I'm having a hard time with the.
Welcome to Bisbee.
Yeah, I actually had a couple of them contact me this weekend, and I'm like, at the deadline was the nineteenth? But, you know.
It's up to Sharon.
I said, you can go ahead and say.
Yeah, tomorrow is my day for going through the last batch of them, because I've got to let artists know by Wednesday what they're bringing to me on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to be photographed next week. So we're really at that, that tight of a deadline, and I'm happy with what we have. I really, really am happy with this, this exhibition's gonna be really good, for the most part. You know, it's like, yeah, we do have a, we do have a few, you know, housewife artists, but we do, and they're welcome, so.
We have a lot of surprises, though. I was not familiar with a lot of the people that I saw submitted, and some of them were incredible. People who've been living out in the boonies, who never interact, suddenly we have found them.
We have found them, you know, on our receipt, it's thirty years on the other side of the divide.
Dude, this is, it, it's kind of amazing.
Peyton's just had eight thousand dollars, and we're gonna have them.
We're not making that public, excuse me, I did not say that.
Doesn't look like that true. All right. We won't get to logistics here in a second.
Yeah, so anyway, we're coming along, it's coming along, and by Wednesday, everyone will get, but, you know, people are asking me ahead of times, like, I gotta let everyone know at the same time, because otherwise, it'll look like people are getting favoritism.
Yeah.
So Wednesday is the day, and I'll probably divide up paperwork if people are willing to sit down and start typing to artists and say which piece we've collected, because it's a hundred and, uh, hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty artists that we responded to. So that's, that's enough.
That's exciting news.
But we're gonna have a great show, so. Anyway, it's all good, all good, and thank you guys for your help in doing this, getting all the artists.
We're gonna talk about logistics here in a second too, because you're not alone in this. But before, we'll go through these other ones, advertising, thank you for paying, toothed on guide.
I have a comment about advertising, we'll get a second.
Yeah, yeah, that's, go for it.
So in the convention center, there, I took a picture. There's that TV they have right on top of the cash machine outside of, um, the coffee shop. And it's a dollar a day if we wanna have that on that TV on their digital advertising. The phone number is five two zero, six four zero, four four six zero. If we were interested, it's a horizontal format there, so I don't know if we have some, oh, I guess it wouldn't matter if there was stuff.
We have different things. I mean, how long does the app stay up, Eva?
Everything you pay for, I guess, right?
No, 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 I mean, I mean, how many seconds it stays on?
Oh, it, yeah, it does.
We have like five, we have so many different posters.
It does rotate through, I was watching it to see, and it's maybe every five minutes it cycles back around. So, and it's up for, well, long enough for me to take two pictures of this, so maybe ten, twenty seconds long, pretty long. I didn't really time it, but.
That's a good idea. I, I have no idea if that is effective or not, you know?
Well, I, you, some people, they're just like, they're, yeah, it's lit up, and it's a TV.
Inside the convention center?
It's out, it's in the convention center. It's out, it's in the convention center, just outside the coffee shop.
It's really cheap, that's what I'm paying right now for, Facebook, Facebook, they pay a dollar a day, which is not that good. When somebody gets a chance to, if you guys get a chance, look at the, um, it's just, it's very nice to see, look at the, the first post about the art festival on Facebook, on the Arts Commission page. People wonder what I spend my time doing, but it is responding to those people on that Facebook app, but it's very charming, cuz everybody's like, we're coming! And I'm like, oh my god, um, yeah, there's like five hundred chairs and hundreds of comments.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, and so, just take a look, um, that has not been going to Bisbee. That's been going every, we have not been advertising so much to Bisbee because I didn't wanna make them sick of us. I mean, they know, they all know, um, but that one's going to Tucson and Phoenix. Yeah, and that's what we, we wanted in advance, getting those people here. Cuz Bisbee, I'm not worried about Bisbee.
The, the hotels are already booked.
Oh, they are?
Oh yeah, I've got friends from San Francisco coming that already booked.
Let me tell you, my greatest fear is no one showing up, my second greatest fear is everyone showing up. Phil's like, he's like, what happened, so too many, and I was like, don't worry about it.
Everyone will show up and it'll be wonderful.
Yeah. Remember, well, we'll get to that in a second, there's just always things that I'm thinking, but yeah, I think that's a cool, I'll look into that, that's, I mean, it's pretty cheap. That's a little, little shabang. Um, we got the table tents, I'm looking at signs, we have a giant banner going up on the convention center.
What's that called?
I have no idea, when, can we put it up? I have order to you.
Now, it's empty, yeah.
Oh, it is? I'm worried about. Um, we had the graphic designer make the things that hang through the, the light poles, but it was, I was worried about the financials. I don't know exactly where, you know?
Those banners are pretty expensive.
Yeah, they're expensive, cuz they're all weatherproof, um, and I need, I still haven't called the city to see where they ordered theirs. They sent me the template, they sent me the size.
Okay, um, yeah, Matt would, Matt or Lorena might have the name of the company that they ordered it from.
But in my research, I was like, those are more expensive than our font.
Yeah, I thought they were gonna go sixty bucks a piece, what are they coming in at?
More like over a hundred a piece, um.
Yeah.
And we had to still print the maps. I can send you the map.
Yep.
It is not finished, I'm not particularly worried because we need them for the event.
Who did you send the map to?
I sent them through the.
Email.
Email.
Sorry, if you, it went out this morning, yeah.
You can have my copy.
Uh, no, if it went this morning, you would just work it all day until it arrives.
We don't have to work this out right now, but what I need from you guys is I need everybody to look it over and tell me what's wrong, Sharon's already done that. Um, there are a few things that are in the wrong place, we know that.
Okay.
And it's just, they just need to be shifted slightly. My biggest question for all of you is, how do you write a bus schedule that repeats itself? It's confusing, right? Have you seen it?
Um, Plars.
So I wrote the regular bus schedule, and then over here I wrote repeated every hour. Is that simplistic enough?
No, I think that's.
Is, is it?
Yeah, I would say it is.
Okay, cuz I was like, I, I'm just worried about making things more complicated. And then over here, this one will be Angela. I realize that the perfor, this is the musician stage, is that, that's where you work, the performer stage?
For the pole?
Yeah.
Uh, that will work, I was actually shifted over onto the sidewalk, there's like.
Wasn't it on this side?
Yeah, I don't think that map's right.
No, 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 it's not, that's why.
Can I, can I look at it?
No, I have no stage to me.
That, that's the stage right there.
Okay.
This is, I don't know what this is, she added this.
Oh.
That's cool.
Yeah.
There's the stage.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe I just.
No, it's not possible.
We're. Karen.
Yeah, you do, I think my red pen.
Thank you, Karen.
It's, it's complicated, if you're like. What? It's complicated. I've been drawing maps, I mean, I have an art degree, it's very limited.
So I have a question, originally my plan was actually to do, um, farther over here, actually in the sidewalk, cuz there's a dead end that drops off on the sidewalk.
Well, just draw yourself in on the right place.
And then the, the aerial, uh, rig is right here.
Draw that in too, that's what I need, that's why. Um, just making fun of me.
No, I just said, uh-huh.
You're totally welcome.
She's talking about the nails.
Anyway, that's what I, I just needed somebody to, I needed everybody to look over that.
So we. This little square right here is a label, that's where we plan to put our changing tip, is that our changing tip?
You've labeled as your changing tip, and it suddenly becomes that.
Okay.
Um, and please, everybody take a look at the other map on your email, and let me know as soon as you can what seems, if anything needs to change. Sorry, the, the map drawing has been pretty complicated, and it doesn't have to say, the, the graphic designer thought it was very funny that I put giant hole in the ground, down there to orientate the map, and it's not necessarily be on the final map. Um, if you can think of any other printing needs other than the catalog, let me know as soon as you can. Because I wanna come to the next meeting with one giant package of everything we need, and the order. Alright, next, say it please.
Can I see the map?
Yeah. Fundraisers, thank you. Yeah, yeah, that one's over.
It's on yours, okay.
I need your pen, I need my pen away.
Just opening the map here.
Yes, please. Um.
Oh, I shouldn't let you see it. Oh, that's.
Next fundraiser, um, food is getting sorted out, we will have to buy plates. I do have to meet with the bartender, they have to order the booze with the liquor license, they still not come yet, um. So the musicians are stoked, the two that are playing the fundraiser, they're, they're like best friends now, it's very.
Oh my gosh, I can introduce them to each other.
They're like, going to make weird instrument, I was like, oh god, here we go. They're very excited, um, when do we wanna open sales for the fundraiser?
When do you guys wanna start marketing, um, tickets or for our fundraiser, does anybody have like a, for me, I think we should, be starting to sell those tickets in September.
They're just coming right up.
Yeah, like.
I can pick up, I can make a page, and when people can buy them online, but we also will be getting physical tickets, probably not until like the fifteenth.
Yeah, I kinda feel like I want people, I guess we could have somebody who's, you know, tech savvy with a, a, a list, I mean, or if we have a way to buy them like the Bright Star or something like that.
Yeah, you go through the Squarespace, I ask for the extra money to sell things on Squarespace.
And then do they just, can they just get like, buy a ticket, a movie ticket online, you just get a QR thing, and they can have that on their phone and.
They could totally have that, we'll have somebody at the door, they will be getting a physical ticket when they show up, because it's a limitation on drinks. If you buy a ticket, you get a couple free drinks. If you're an artist and you didn't buy a ticket, you have to pay for your own booze, the world is a very unfair place, but we can't, we can't afford to pay it.
Yeah.
They can get the drink tickets back at the door when they show their ticket or their QR code, so they could just read that.
Thinking, cuz Sharon wanted a ticket designed for it, and so we could just, if they bought it online, we'll hand them that ticket, like. Like, whole bunch, does that work for you?
That works. And we'll have a list of all the people who've pre-purchased.
Just check them off as they come through.
Unfortunately, um, because of how big this event will be, we cannot allow artists to bring a guest that is unpaid. It would just be pandemonium. I also, but I am pretty sure this is a twenty-one and up event, which makes it easier for me to write the license about, but, um, so, yeah, the next thing we'll be putting on the food, and then we'll just have to buy some plates and stuff.
Plates and napkins.
And we need those volunteers, you, you said you had a couple ladies, maybe?
One person has said for sure yes, Sonia is the only one.
But I will.
Did you have already passed the food? I think we can, we can have all the pass orders when it comes down.
I, I will, I will, I will tell you.
Like, I prefer to have a job, so.
I did it the last one, I don't care, but I mean, I'll ask, um, I'm her husband.
I could give him, I went to, and her friends do.
Yeah, I, I'll ask Ariel.
Yeah, I asked Ariel, but I didn't get a response, so maybe I haven't asked again, maybe that.
Yeah, ask three, ask three times, it's like magic in this thing.
I've also, I asked Caitlin, Ariel, Sonia, and, uh, Dandy. Those are all the right people, yeah, so.
Yeah, that would be great.
Dandy said a maybe, and then Sonia said definitely yes, can't wait, explanation.
She was like, she was trying to volunteer like last year.
Nice, and, and then no response from Caitlin or Ariel about it, so I think they're on the fence.
We'll see, we asked if I can dig up some people too.
Can I ask a something, something that's not, are we kind of in between?
Well, we, are we going to be talking about what you want, or?
No, I have to talk about it.
Then I would, since we're not with fundraiser, go for it.
Um, the question is, it's one of the musicians brought it to my attention, that she needs to be able to drive right up to the stage.
Oh, we do have that, I actually did put it over, yep, it'll, bus stops and parking logistics, including parking for vendors.
Sorry.
Thought of you. Next galleries, they're sending in their information, there's a map of them, that's all that really matters. Next volunteers, like we said, we need, we're gonna need a volunteer wrangler. I volunteered you to be the volunteer wrangler, but you can back out, but we'll talk to you about it. Um, we still, you weren't here, so it was very easy the last time, really.
You didn't give us any trouble last time.
The T-shirt thing really hinges on how much money Sharon spends at the beginning of the month, I'm just kidding, so, not really.
I have to understand.
Are you skipping, cuz I, I have to add something back in on these things.
Uh, which one were you, I'm sorry?
I don't even know if that counts as the, um, fundraiser, but you had said, what about, what do we do for people that give money?
Yeah, it's on.
I have an answer for that.
Yeah, it's on here somewhere.
Alright, I'll just.
I mean, the sponsorship.
Yeah, right, right, is that.
It's coming up next, it's coming up in a couple.
Alright.
Yeah, I think it's this one.
Sorry, we're, we're going, we're going straight here.
Straight down now.
Volunteers, let's, well, I'm just, I'm just waiting for a second before I even think about that one. If anybody, does anybody have anything to say about volunteers right now?
I can probably find one.
I know there's a lot of things we said about volunteers, but, um, I think if we wanna visit it, do you wanna cover a bunch of other stuff and then revisit it, because it might be long, something takes a while?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, vendors, I am slowly shaking insurance out of these people. Um, I have six o'clock Wednesday, a Zoom session with eight of them to explain insurance. I will know so much about insurance by the end of this that I will cry, um, so we have, there are vendors who require to buy event insurance. Um, a lot of busy people are not, have not done that before, so I'm having a Zoom meeting with them to talk about it. You're welcome to come, let me know if anybody wants to be there.
I actually wouldn't like to be invited to that.
I'll bet you. You're gonna send out another email.
I'd like to have a little more information when people bombard me with questions.
Yeah, you tell them, I tried to complain my way out of it, it didn't work, I'm asking them, they don't even wanna talk about it anymore.
It's done now, it's done.
Yeah, so fix, I'll send you a Zoom thing on, I'm gonna send a reminder email on Wednesday morning, I'll put you on there.
Is it on a Wednesday evening?
Yeah, Wednesday at six, I can record it.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
Yeah, I do.
Can you do that, cuz I'll be in class.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll send it to you, I'll be very excited for you.
Sharon's like, somebody else wants to be involved.
It's such a dry subject, anyway.
Yeah, it is.
Central school event, oh, Central School is handling it.
We don't have to do it.
Alright, can we just come next to that?
Yeah. Bus schedule, bus schedule done.
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 Thank you.
I don't, some of these are just living.
Good job, Karen.
That was the bus schedule, it was killing me too, um, discussion and possible action defining sponsorship for the Festival of the Arts.
Okay, so I talked again to my San Francisco cousin, who they contribute to many things and do all this kind of stuff. And he said two things that they appreciate, one would be a sign on a stand that thanks the sponsors in a nice little sign, and then he said, what is really nice is if we write, handwrite, all of us, thank you cards to the sponsors that we.
Yeah.
It's personal, and he said, they just, they love that.
So it's more about the appreciation than.
It's being recognized.
Well, we talked about putting a thank you in the book, but I don't know if people are, you know, what their, we, we got a few more people who are interested. Did anybody think about like what kind of levels we should offer? We talked about Bisbee Pride was very expensive, and we didn't want to make people pay fifteen hundred dollars or something to, um, but I didn't know if anybody had researched to see like what kind of money we should be asking for sponsorships.
Are we though, like, I mean, is that something we're doing?
I mean, it, it really, we could.
It just seems like one more.
It's a lot.
But some people have just generously donated, we, I don't know if we need to.
Were there people asking maybe about like?
Capitation, yes, so capitation really, um.
Some window companies.
So if they had a, if they, yeah, if they had a little advertisement of their logo, they just need to send it in, and, and put it in the book, I think, back or somewhere, thanks to the generous.
Sponsorship page.
Yeah, just have one sponsorship page.
That sponsorship page would probably also carry like who the commission is, and it'll have the other information on it, because I, I can't imagine us getting a whole lot of sponsors, but, you know, getting another thousand dollars is not gonna be a bad idea.
No, to get a little bit.
Getting back to this sphere of printing.
So.
It could be at the fundraiser end at the.
Yeah, it just.
During, at the gallery during the whole.
So you think.
To make it happen, what we need is a form or something, so people can fill it out.
And so you're thinking what we need to do is have tiers, so that this is what we do, this is what you'll get if it's under a thousand dollars.
Can we just make it two tiers?
We can make it simple, I just need somebody to take the idea and run.
How about a thousand dollars and under is one tier, second tier is one thousand to five thousand, and five thousand and overs.
What do they get?
And that's what we have to decide is the power.
Thousand, you get.
Why are we gonna gift them for charity?
Maybe they can get a couple.
To give it to the dinner.
You give us ten thousand dollars and you get a date with Sharon.
Yeah, talk to my husband.
Yeah.
Snake Ranger.
Um, orbital, orbital.
The level of recognition, I don't think that, like, anybody that donates to, for myself personally, and when I donate to something, I usually turn out any kind of swag, cuz it costs, and on my point is not to buy something from them, I want them to use the money. So I agree that what should be awarded is recognition, and so having different amounts of recognition, so.
The chance of getting more than a thousand from almost anybody in your town is, is pretty rare.
It's rare.
So we're probably gonna have one tier.
Yeah, pretty much, well, and then we have tier three already, Sloan.
You start at T, yeah. Sloan has his own tier.
Yes.
I would say a hundred fifty plus.
Okay.
So they, they could be, have their advertisement in the book, that would be something permanent. It's if they gave a law, they could have a bigger.
One fifty plus, I would say you get a thank you in the book, does that make sense? If you give over a thousand, well, I will pray you a better myself. Or five, what do you think, five hundred, a thousand?
I think five hundred is a good tier.
Yeah.
And, um, and by the way, maybe at a five hundred dollar level, they get a, a ticket to the VIP event.
Yeah.
But I don't, at two hundred fifty dollars, I don't wanna give away, you know, two tickets, cuz that's really only a hundred fifty bucks.
On the website, can, on the page, can you put, you know, sponsors, if you wanna sponsor the event type thing?
Yeah, that's what I should do, it's probably just like a page on the website, and then people will be able to pay us through that. So one fifty plus, you get a thank you in the book.
Mm-hmm.
Five hundred plus, you get a ticket to the event, which we're doing.
And the book.
And. You get the catalog if you buy a ticket, yeah.
Oh, and a free catalog, nice.
So you get ticket, thank you, catalog, what about banners?
No, I think just a sign.
We're gonna be putting up a banner for, uh, Arizona Water.
That's a lot of banners, oh.
So.[1749.42]
That's a lot of banners.
I think just the.
I think just a sign that lists the donors.
Yeah, they.
Okay, I'll put something on the website.
Well, that's something you and I can just get through the place up in Phoenix, or, you know, town, yeah, reprogrammics.
Oh, yeah. The website, you could post to donate it to.
Yeah, I could put an easy button on the website.
A donation button?
No, just donate, like, like, have a station.
Yeah, but that. But I, I would all be the same page, it would be like, these are people who donated, and then donate here, you know, and we'll have those two twos. I really want, I think those are enough twos.
Do you wanna get on this list of cool people?
Yeah, if you wanna be, yeah, and I'll put the five thousand, what is it, two thousand, how much does it cost?
Five.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'll make a page, I'll share it with you guys, you can tell me what you think.
Okay.
I think that's the way to go. I'm just trying to think, I'm sorry, in the middle of thought, um. Review, discussion, impossible action, rerouting the map, please look at it, tell me what's wrong, say, get it printed, that's all it's about. I'm gonna take this back, this is my problem.
Oh, alright.
Do you wanna look at it?
I do wanna show you.
Right on to that pen. They'll show me right.
Now, the, oh, you have a red pen.
My memory is not.
Do you need a pen?
Just stick over there, then I'll get it back.
So we jumped out to where?
Now we are back to page three, we don't always do it like this, we're just, there's just a lot.
There's so much.
Then I have to leave earlier than everybody, she has a class at seven.
So now we're back to food trucks. Down the bottom, page three, food trucks right here, I'll see it.
There it is.
We need food trucks.
Yeah, um, has anybody had any?
I haven't found any food trucks, except Savan, Savan.
We need two.
Well, um, Los Hermanos from Warren, they have a little food truck now.
Do they have a food truck?
Yeah, just recently, just.
But I think he's working during the day at his restaurant, his, his partner left. I don't know if he could work during the, because he, he needs to be at his.
Yeah, he needs somebody, he needs presents over there, okay.
Anybody think of anybody else?
I can't think of anybody, that's my problem.
Yeah, we've already talked to the po boy, um.
You did?
I know, have we, have you talked to?
Has anybody talked to Po Boy?
No. No.
Oh, that's the food truck that's right there in Warren also.
Yeah, so we have Los Hermanos that has a truck, we're not sure if they're, you can manage it or not.
I don't think so.
Po Boy, um, then there's also, uh, Stewart.
What's the name of this?
Woody's. That is the cold pork.
He's all downtown.
Yeah, the guy that's always downtown, cold pork guy, and he's pretty consistent.
The, that's always downtown.
It's really, really good, but it's very expensive, um. Would he cook? Isn't he downtown?
Well, he may.
Oh, you say.
He's doing a daytime thing.
It's expensive because he's really kind to his pigs, so.
I know, that's, that's what I was telling myself, because I'm eating.
Um, the one that said all the events is Woody's.
Big Woody's, yeah.
Big Woody's, but I don't know where they are from.
He's here in town, he owns the, um, uh, laundromat.
Oh, is that who it is? It'd be nice to have at least one vegan option.
Yeah.
Is there a vegan food truck anywhere?
There is one at the farmer's market.
Or can they just?
That's what I, so I did a post, I don't know if you guys saw it on Facebook, where I asked, who's everybody's favorite local food truck?
I don't know, what did they say?
They said, everybody we just listed and the vegan person at the Saturday market.
There you go.
So there you go.
Um, there aren't as many.
The problem with food trucks is you don't get them to travel very far, they don't, they don't do well on the road. There is the guy over in Douglas who has the, uh, Mexican hot dog guy that's at the park all the time. But again, these trucks, they, people don't like to move them very far.
Yeah, yeah, sure, I can imagine.
Also, were we talking about a potential?
So even local food trucks.
Wasn't your husband, doesn't your husband do it?
No, no, Nina, Nina's husband was.
Nina!
Oh, yeah, he does some as well, yeah.
All's good, he's got a side thing?
I was like, no, I was like, he's involved in lots of stuff, of course, he's tired of it, so.
But we should get them together, because we're gonna invite them. Yeah, that's why we need this movement.
Yeah.
We have, we have two months and two days.
Because Nina's husband does.
Well, if anybody.
Because like.
Hot dogs and.
Hot dogs, uh, cotton candy, that kind of stuff.
Is anybody very close to any of the food truck people?
Hmm?
Anybody have a friend who has a food truck?
No.
Alright, who wants to contact with food trucks?
It would be.
I have, I actually did for the Bratz, use Po Boys, and, uh, he was really easy to work with and really, really good.
And how many, we're wanting two, is that?
I think two is too, it'd be good, so let me, I'll, I'll go and talk to Po Boys to go.
Okay.
Who else can talk to who else?
So you can talk to Po Boys. Um.
What about Savan, does anybody want her, do you know, what I mean, at the, for her?
Yes, I love Savan.
Is she vegan?
She can be, but she, well, not typically.
I was looking for vegan options.
Well, should I ask her?
Should I ask her?
I'll ask her.
And I'll call Nina too, and see what her husband thinks too, and what he can handle.
That would be like perfect combo, actually, you guys, if we could get those three.
Cover all bases.
Yeah.
We have none of our last two. Um, so who's contacting Po Boys?
I will, I'm gonna.
Who's, who's contacting Savan?
Me.
Alright, I'll put the comment down, we got that done.
Perfect.
Discussion, printing needs, I don't know, I just got redundant here with this agenda. Um, think about what we need, if I haven't mentioned it, please.
The only other need I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need.
I need a sign for your building.
I need needs, I, um, I need, yeah, we need a sign for the building. We need to have, uh, receiving records for when that art comes in. Um, and, and they, we need to be able to give a copy to the artist and keep a copy that has their statement on it and their, the value of the piece, though that isn't gonna be printed or typed on anything, I need value just to know.
You just need a receipt.
That's not a receipt, exactly, but, we're gonna talk about it in a second, I gotta figure it out.
It's kinda.
Do you just need a little form, or are you gonna put together a little form they can fill out?
Like a receipt book?
Nah, more like a paper.
I skipped one, I skipped, I skipped the agenda item that you were actually talking about.
I know.
Logistics have dropped off.
Yeah.
There it is.
Arrows, I, I've been usually a little bit more.
So we'll get form, we need a form.
When people are bringing their art in.
Well, you need a duplicate, you need a duplicate.
Let's, let's talk about this for a second. Um, I have, have a data entry thing. I have put all the artist's names on there, even the ones that we haven't done yet. I, it's sort of make it our lives easier. On there, I made an area that has their name, the size of the art, as you know, the name of the piece. Now there's an area for their sentences, and if we have the artwork. Um, data entry wise, I thought that if we have them come in, we, and I, we checked it with them, that thing, we checked their names and everything. We could use that as our, thing we sent Bridget.
As our copy, and give them just a handwritten thing?
It would make our lives easier, because I didn't know about.
I, I, I kinda want a signature from them that's on, that's on file with their drop off, so I don't mind carbon paper, I love carbon paper.
Then you wanna just, do you have a carbon paper book?
I'll get one.
Okay, because otherwise, I think we could just have them tell us and we can check their name and everything else.
Yeah, we can, I would still wanna do that.
Yeah, but you do have something.
And then we need two more, well, as, as we're here at this point, let us drop, um, we need two more, like we've got the artist responses file, we've been shoving everything in. I need a place to put the three hundred DPI photos that are coming in, as a separate file.
That's me. Yeah.
And we may as well even, we could create a separate file with the words, because those words have to be then sent to Bridget with.
Well, this is what was my plan, is if I send her the Google Doc thing that I've already made, it will have everything.
Yeah. Yeah.
And even though it sucks to print it out, because it's like ten thousand pages long this way, for her, it's easy, because she can just pull it up and make it bigger. And so I thought if we put everything in there, and we could, we could avoid the step.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think I just want a signature for the drop off, though, if I.
That's fine, so I would use a carbon book, that's great.
Yes, okay.
And maybe we just get a.
Let's talk about this a little more too. Friday night, what's the time?
I have them already.
Wait, wait, what, you know, what is the time of the drop off?
Uh, we had, um.
Six, no, five to eight?
No, no, five to eight. Four to eight, I thought.
No, it's five to eight.
Five to eight, Friday night.
Probably, where are we going there, because I'll be there.
What day? Yeah, yeah, we're gonna.
Twelve to four on Saturday.
Nina, will you call a forum for us? Because that was, I'm sorry.
I know what she meant, I know what she meant.
It's after so many years, oh my god.
So the dates, tonight is that?
What, what's the date again?
Of Friday, the twenty sixth.
Thank you.
Is that right? Is that right, twenty eighth, twenty ninth, no, twenty.
It's Friday.
Twenty six.
Twenty six is this Friday.
Twenty seventh and twenty eighth.
Let's look at a calendar.
Yes, Friday the twenty sixth.
Oh, no, it's one of those sixty and first.
Friday, twenty sixth, and we don't have to be there, you said.
No, yes, I do, I'm celebrating there, it's, it's fine.
Twenty six, so it's Friday, the twenty sixth, and the twenty seventh.
So five to eight on Friday, uh, noon to four on Saturday, and Sunday by appointment.
Where?
At Deverone's.
So Deverone is the old.
On Erie Street.
It's on Erie, it's in Lowell.
It's field called.
I know where Erie Street is.
I think it's seventy two Erie Street, isn't it seventy two? Yeah, I don't need the address, that's why I was.
Yeah, I don't know what we need anything.
Sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, me too.
So, oh, yes, we sent.
Let me double check that, because she sent it to me in, in the first.
And, uh, didn't we originally plan, you had people that were gonna help, um, Sharon on Friday and Saturday?
Yeah.
And didn't, didn't people offer, any offered to help, because their customers?
Hold on one second, okay, first off, you remember, you can't talk over, everybody can't, they, they let us get away with it, but we're gonna, they're gonna kill us. So, one at a time, let's start, Friday, five to eight, Saturday, twelve to four. Let's talk about who's going to be where. Slowly.
I'll be, I volunteer to be.
I'll be there.
There on Friday for half of the time.
And I'm bringing pizza.
Just one, someone wanna split it out?
So Friday, I'm there Friday, Saturday and Sunday, I'm receiving the art. And anybody who wants to join me?
Okay.
Can join me.
I will be there on Friday.
Oh, you're gonna be there on Friday, sorry.
We will all, so apparently, we will all be there on Friday, because I have a data entry thing, which I've gotta show you how to do.
Maybe I should be there on Saturday, since I wanna.
I cannot personally be there on Saturday, everybody is welcome to be there on Friday.
I'll be there.
What's going to be happening, just so you know, I know you're like, these people are crazy, but we're really not, we just have a lot of hard plates. The artists, we're making, we're having this huge exhibition.
Not for the whole time, though.
And Friday, they're dropping off their art, starting to drop off their art.
Yeah, I can't do it the whole time either. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're dropping off art, they're dropping off their art. It's, it is a nice experience, if you would like to meet some of the artists in this town, if you wanna hang out, if you want to bring me some wine. Um, five to eight, I will be there personally Friday to eight, because I have the data entry thing. Saturday, I will not be there.
And I will be.
And you'll have to do the data entry yourself.
So I'll be there on Saturday, but not the whole time.
Yeah, Jenny's gonna help part of the time, does anybody else have free time?
Everybody has time.
Everybody has time of like, like two.
If I do, I'm, I'll come over.
So on Saturday, what time are you planning on?
I would be there from twelve to two, if you could do two to four.
From twelve to four. I could do two to four, okay.
So what you're gonna be doing is, using this data entry, making sure that we have the right pieces, they put the right, they brought the right pieces of art. We have their names spelled correctly, we have the right dimensions of their artwork, we get the statement that they want in the book and, and the website or Instagram, they also want it included as their contact in the book. So it's all about the book information, and then Sharon will write them a.
Receipt.
Receipt. It's a, it's pretty, it's pretty easy. I will do the data entry on Friday, but I'll show you how to do it, it's pretty easy.
Okay.
Um, and I can be there Saturday.
You know, I might actually buy enough pieces that when they come, they can have a piece, I'll just.
Maybe you should do the data entry.
We don't like it that much.
I don't like it that much.
I'm sure. But yeah, so, it'll be fun, then everybody will, in Deverone, her studio is incredible. Because that's all.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
I'm just trying to, you're, you have hooked me up in the wire on these time constraints.
Sorry, I'm telling you the right, so it's this upcoming.
So let's move to that catalog update.
Go ahead.
So catalog, everybody, I did get an email, and I thought she had forwarded it to Karen as well, or maybe you didn't see it, but it's, uh, it came in in the email from Bridget Shanahan. These two quotes from two different companies based on a book that's a hundred and fifty pages to, maybe a little higher than that. Um, on average, each catalog could cost twenty bucks a piece.
Wow.
Why do you wait so long to say?
I know, that's way more than I was anticipating. I was anticipating ten bucks a piece.
What we're looking at is.
Sloan was telling me five bucks a piece is what he paid, I don't believe that anymore, but I didn't believe it in the first place.
What we're looking at then is that we are gonna need sponsorship to pay for front end.
Right, it's four thousand, four thousand, we're doing, we, we are quoting, uh, wanting three hundred catalogs, so it's.
We have to pay Daniele too, and Daniele is not on here, because we don't know how much she's paid, we're being paid. So the sponsorships will be important because of that, so they will be directly sponsoring the book.
But also, we'll be, we also are getting five thousand dollars coming in from our fundraiser, of which we'll spend, you know.
Sure, but the.
I, we're gonna sell a hundred tickets, you guys, I'm gonna, we're responsible to selling, you know, twelve, something.
We won't have that money until, and there is a budget, there's a budget thing, but we have to be careful about. I'm not quite sure how it works, I'll talk to, I'm gonna talk.
Yeah, see if, see if we can.
If Ashley ever talks to me again, I'll.
I'm here just fine. But anyway, so that, that, I, I should have, I guess, I thought that it had been sent to you as well, so.
I'll.
It's not a done deal, because we don't know the length of this catalog, and like I said, until I get to the point where I've chosen all of the art uh, that's gonna be in it, then we really will know. Oh, oh, yeah, that's different. I got excited about the piece of art that's coming in. We got some pieces coming from the museum, so.
Oh.
Alright, so there we go, okay.
Bus stops and parking logistics, including parking for vendors and performers. We were having vendors park over by, um.
On consignment?
Yeah. And then the bus stops, I, that was just like a second thought, that I realized we needed to mark the bus stops with our own thing. That was really just to remind myself. Um, because we're gonna have to put the schedule on each bus stop that we're using and have some, it's, yeah. It would be taken care of, but that doesn't really, the real thing is the parking logistics for performers.
Yeah.[1484.04]
So what we can do is, oh, my new map.
Well.
We can hold the parking places the closest to us, but we can't park any closer than this.
I know, but could someone walk, could one performer just be dropped off, like, where I put that big circle? Because she can't walk that far.
Can we wheelchair her?
I don't know.
I just don't know, cause we're gonna have a tent right there, I mean, logistically, it could become a nightmare, these people are gonna be walking.
Yeah, and I don't think we're gonna be able to move any cars down the road once we've got it closed off, but maybe we can get her there.
So, uh.
I think it'd be dangerous to try and get a car there.
When, alright, so fine, she can probably walk from the closest parking spot.
Yeah, I mean, whenever do, the only thing that I could say is that we probably, whenever a parking spot is right here, we just.
We have to say that, because everyone's gonna be bringing guitars and sorts of things.
Is it, is it, um, is it, would it be somehow inappropriate to offer her wheelchair?
I think that might be going before I'll talk to her about.
Is there, do you have space?
What we're proposing.
Not anywhere in that vicinity.
I'm wonder, here's what I'm wondering, I forgot, what about the space right in front of Deb's that says fifteen loaning zone? It's, it's not really in the street yet.
Oh, it's like right here.
It's right there, could we designate that for musicians dropping off, you know, pulling up and dropping them?
I think.
I think so.
So.
We're gonna need a couple, we're gonna need a couple of, uh, parking cones.
It's not down. Cars.
We'll apologize to city later and say yes.
Okay, that would work perfectly for.
I mean, that, it's not, it would be blocking the ambulances that are coming in to save us, okay.
That was my proposition.
Not there. So we need parking cones, let me see if I have some, I probably do, oh, they do, okay, well.
Yes, two per.
I think that's fine.
It's time for me to, Scoot, can I, uh, real fast, I know we need to talk about pedestals and walls for the exhibition, but we really don't know what we need yet till we finish our, right, count. Uh, I just wanna say the cigar machine is, um, on sabbatical for a couple days until I can get it fixed.
You skipped, you skipped a whole different art.
I'm sorry.
She's, she's, it's just a discussion, she's gotta go.
No, 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 seven, seven.
I just, I don't know, discussion and I have six is more related on the time, can you, is that okay?
I'm stressed out, okay.
Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
We'll figure it out, am I, I see tomorrow.
Yeah, but, um, just so everybody knows, it, it, there was a, there was a, it's always when I leave town, somebody pulled the handle, it wouldn't go back in, and then money was going in the machine, and people weren't able to get things because it was accepting money without.
Give them any money.
So it's turned off, I'm gonna have to fix on Wednesday, um, Andre's gonna come over and help me, I'll buy him a beer or something, so.
So Andre's.
Andre's gonna come over, girl?
Andre's gonna help.
He's coming over when?
Wednesday.
What time?
Uh, he said to call him in the morning.
So.
Just wanna help. Okay.
Before you go, I just wanna double check this, five to eight, Friday night, if you need directions or anything, just text me.
No, I.
You got it?
Yeah.
Five to eight, we have Amy, Bill, Sharon, and Karen, accepting artwork, from twelve to two on Saturday, we have Sharon and Jenny, and then we have Angela and Sharon, and then you and I can do it on Saturday, someday, okay? Um, sorry, you don't get a day off, Sharon.
I, I, I'm alright with that.
Um.
Kurt's not, but I am.
I have a meeting till noon, like twelve thirty tomorrow, so I'll text you after that.
Okay, and what time tomorrow, like three o'clock again?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Alright, thank you very much, I'm sorry, have to do this to you guys.
We should all go to yoga.
Yeah, come to yoga, we can all, we can all use it.
Item six, we have additional items related to the Bisbee Arts Festival, and we can go back to volunteers too, this time.
I have a question, will we ever gonna do that, like, donation boxes, or did that just go away?
Oh, yeah, well, let me tell you what happened, I went and talked to Steve's wife the other day, um, anyway, it's kind of back in motion. I offered to buy the pedestal base and the, the birdhouse top, and I could have Frank Davis finish it.
Okay.
So I'm waiting to hear back, I went and talked to her, but there's some, there's something going on, yeah.
Okay. You, you, they do personal things.
Okay, thank you guys.
Bye.
Thank you, good luck.
Karen?
Thank you.
I just mailed you six service photos.
Excellent, thank you.
Just let me know if they don't work, if they're not high enough for us.
Now that Sharon's gone, I can talk about her. Now, you guys have, I really do wanna say with something about the arts, uh, festival, I know we're all working really hard. I am in a unique position where I share an email address with Sharon, because we're both getting things, and I will say that that woman is answering a hundred emails a day.
Yeah.
And I, I have a deep respect for that. Um, now we're back on task, the item six, does anybody have anything else they wanna talk about with the arts festival?
No, that is not a big deal, but if somebody asks me, uh, a photograph in the artwork at the exhibit, is that gonna be allowed or no?
Oh, pictures during the VIP event or anything.
You know, I would probably say no, because otherwise, we'd have to get the permission of a hundred and forty people.
That's, that's what I thought, yeah, so there'd be no photographs.
Yeah.
I have never even thought of that.
Right.
Well, somebody, I never thought of it either, but somebody asked me, that's what I did, and I didn't know what to tell them.
Should, should, should make that. Yeah, sort of, um.
Yeah.
No, because they're particularly gonna wanna take photos at the event of each themselves, and then artwork will be in the background, so.
Well, you'd need them to sign off when, when they drop their artwork off.
Yeah, that might be an important thing to have.
What is the photo resolution that you need for the catalog?
Three hundred DPI, sign off. I already forgot what I was gonna contact, I don't know.
Her husband, food truck.
That's easy enough.
That does.
Alright, thank you, and I just wanna tell you, Holly, it's not always like this.
No, it's never like this, this is crazy.
Uh.
It's really chatterbox.
Please feel free.
We're, we're all really like stressed out.
Is this the whole world, do you wanna come by on Friday night, if you have any time, then we can also just talk about it, you know.
She's out of town.
Okay. Uh, well, never tell them.
Sorry.
No, no, you're fine, I've made my trip tomorrow morning, so that I could come to this tonight.
Yeah.
Any other, uh, additional items relating to the Bisbee Arts Festival, no? Item seven, update discussion regarding the Sig Art Machine, but she has left the building, social media?
I'm moving right along, doing what I do, I.
Looks great.
Hoping at some point, probably not before the festival, but at some point, I will probably consult with Holly about content creation.
And I'm very excited to hear about your abilities.
Yes, yes.
I, I offer coaching and, and guidance and social media.
That's awesome.
But for now, you're gonna keep getting what you've been getting.
Yeah, you did great. I appreciate it, especially the post about the wall down in Douglas, it's, it was great.
Yeah, it was fun.
With this little world.
I was gonna put like the little heart in this one way, if it happened, I'm too old.
And your videos, I still have posted, not meaning.
Just take this off, cause I'm not gonna make any more videos, at least while I'm teaching school.
Yeah, it's overwhelming, again.
It is, yeah, they put me on an extra, extra big time consuming thing too, so.
It's always the Bisbee unit, right?
And is the windows not gonna change till after the festival?
No, there's no reason to try. We only do it as an update once a month, the window is not changing, I, and we.
Not till after the festival.
Then, item eight, any future items that we have not talked about, Ash is over here keeping score of what we probably have to do.
Trying to.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
It's just a lot.
You have a lot going on, so, hopefully I don't miss anything.
Any? Do I have a motion?
This is Bill's favorite part.
A second?
Second.
Oh, I, thank you guys, please take a look at that.